Okay, I want to call meeting order.
Carl.
Here.
Charlie.
Here.
John.
Present.
Amy.
Here. Okay, stand for the pledge. Okay. We're gonna audit vouchers, so you guys can shop by it.
I got it.
I was waiting to see if you were gonna attend. Somebody signed that bottom line.
I want that.
You got a three hundred thousand dollar cash. Will you be delivering house foundation?
Well, that's just what happened. So that'll be, yeah.
And then regardless, you may not get it. You're looking at a million bucks. But, uh, who's asleep at the wheel?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah. The other night, Saturday night, after he was. I also heard a double thing in my cell. I'm the other soon. Like, they're gone, Dad. I need stuff to it. Oh, yes. People wanted to know if he's trying to. So, for some. I would say. Megan? Uh, well, that big friend is, uh, yeah. Where she she's about a year, yeah, you know, that was. You wouldn't have, huh? He finds the issue. It looks like he was straight in. He's the one. Well, before the, yeah. Yeah. He should all throw up. She'd take anything, she'd go to the right side, she'd say anything to this man. She never went to jail. Oh, perfect.
Before, I forgot, I meant to ask you earlier, do you care if I give that guy from the state your cellphone?
No.
What? The Johnson?
Yeah. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Port gets out.
Was that?
Port gets out.
I just figured, will you be in gone all day? It's better to give him his cellphone.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I just didn't want to do it without submission, even though I just did it yesterday.
That was better, too. That was that, that was that.
The other thing about a phone is you don't have to answer it.
Right. But I told him, I told that, that he was on the case.
He said many times. No, I talked to him, I talked to him.
You talked to him?
No, no, not at, no.
Oh, you talked to him?
I talked to him. About the other person.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I've got, I've, I've got, anything else I'm waiting. It's a point. He was good. May, it's for June, May third. March third, eighth.
Uh, that's when, uh, that was.
Oh, okay. I, I figured it was something, I wanted to listen to you, but I know it was. Are we getting tired of it all?
But then I think it was very bad, everything.
You got all pretty.
Did you get into the town hall?
I did.
Oh?
It went right, because they didn't know.
I don't know if there's a.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But no, I got one feeling.
You want me to play that part?
There's three more.
That's what, that's what the, the miss. I want to say this time, they got. If I could use kind of discount. That'd be somewhere.
A general. He was in town.
The jury was there, the team was satisfied before they. They interrupted.
So. Only God, it's just.
I didn't expect. Yeah, since the edge was.
We're all there. Yeah. I don't think we have a two week to do.
Okay. We're gonna move on to privilege of the floor. Um, and I will read the rules. Uh, it is board's discretion to invite the pub, invite public participation. Persons desiring to speak at a public meeting or hearing must sign on the sign up sheet if one is provided or raise one's hand to be recognized. The speaker may not address or may not address the board until recognized by the chairperson of the board. The speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. The speaker will give his or her name, address, and organization, if any, and the, and the subject he or she will be addressing. The speaker must address the board and not individual board members. Discussion between speakers and attendees of the public hearing or hearing, public meeting or hearing are prohibited. A speaker may disagree with or support prior speakers and comments directed to the board. Comments must relate to the purpose of a hearing or legitimate town businesses, business at a board meeting. Speakers should present their remarks in a courteous manner and may, and may not make personal comments about public officials, town residents, or others. Black cards, banners, or other signs are not permitted in meeting rooms, nor the distribution of flyers. A person who disregards the directives of the chairperson in enforcing the rules disturbs the peace at a meeting, making impertinent or slanderous remarks, or generally conducts himself or herself in a boisterous or inappropriate manner while addressing the board shall be barred from further participation and forfeit any balance of time remaining for his or her comments. After final warning, if the speaker refuses to step down, the chairperson can request that a police officer or a peace officer remove the individual from the meeting. Okay, open it up, privilege of the floor. Want me to talk for a while, they still want to hear you talk? No? Okay. We'll move on to department reports. First up, we're gonna have Kurt with the highway.
Well, we started our summer work mowing and paving. But, big topic tonight is the bridge. Uh, school crap road has been yellow flagged. It was reconditioned five years ago and the main beams have been flagged.
Right. So, uh, we received the yellow flag on the first of May. And the bridge was, the, the top of the bridge was replaced in two thousand eighteen. Um, it was an open, Kurt, jump in if I'm out of line on any of this. The, 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 it was originally an open grate system, um, bridge, so all the sand and salt will go down and everything into the water, so, uh, the town received grant money, um, and replaced the top of the bridge, um, and put a new permanent structure over the top, on top of the current, the beams that were there. The beams that were there, um, at the time, the engineering firm that acted as the consultant for the town, not the engineering firm that did the work, but the consultant for the town, um, said that the beams would be able to be, uh, would, would support the new bridge, but they left it at that. They did not give a determination on the time period. The, um, at, at that time, the board then moved to just replace the top. Now, um, we have received a yellow flag and it's the beams underneath the bridge that are failed. So what supports the whole bridge are failed and, uh, essentially there's, we're investigating, um, options, but so far, um, ultimately, the bottom line is you can't fix the beams that support the bridge without removing the bridge. So, that's.
And that was Doug Miller. Um, I, he hasn't got back to me, he hasn't got back to you?
No.
Okay. He was gonna bring his bridge guy out and see if, what our options are. But him and I went under the bridge and he looked at him physically and he's like, wow. Somebody dropped the ball there. And slammed it in my lap. But somebody, you, you know, you don't build a new house on a crumbling foundation. Somebody dropped the ball and you built a brand new bridge on top of old nineteen fifty-six beams.
Yeah. And, and to compound that, um, in, was it twenty twenty? The other one, or no, that was twenty eighteen too, right?
You're talking about. That was before, I don't remember the exact year, I found.
We also received the plan this week on the onion bill.
But that's, so that flag is for the button. Spaulding on the button.
Right.
I want the board's permission to meet with Doug Miller again, take a look at. That we might be able to fix, we fixed the other side years ago, but I don't know to the extent.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to. But, um, and the other, the other issue I want to bring up is, um, today I received an email from the state, um, in regards to, uh, the school crap road bridge. And the state is, uh, opened their own investigation into it, um, because they were thoroughly impressed with Kurt's, uh, response to the yellow flag and the fact that an engineer is already there, so they're, they're gonna work, try to work with themselves.
Who, who was the consulting firm, was it Bartman and Jeeves?
No, they did the work, it was a different company.
Oh, you now did the work, but our consulting?
The consultants to the project, the.
Our, the towns.
The towns consultants.
Do you know who they was?
It's in the paperwork, I don't have the names.
It's not a date I recognize, yeah.
They did the actual work, they did, they got the job to do the work, but the, who determined what the work was?
Right.
But, if I remember correctly, it was an engineer on site when they're doing the bridge project. Why didn't that engineer pick up on it? Now, I can tell you, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a bridge builder. One look at those beams and you're going, why would you leave them? They were totally exposed. Even if it costs a, a hundred thousand dollars at that point. That's gonna be a billion dollar bridge when you're done, at this point, if it's a total destruction. Oh, I know, yeah, but I, I mean, this, this is probably not me, I got an email saying, you are responsible.
Right.
That's the personal. But.
The whole town, that, don't take it.
I know, but it was when you opened up for a second in the morning, had a cup of coffee, you're like.
Exactly what I did.
It's gonna be that kind of day.
Just on the board, why?
No, I, I get it, but it's just frustrating, because I'm a taxpayer in this town. Yeah. That's a good analogy, right? Nobody else has a fun foundation, so I don't, you know, I don't think the town can, I don't.
So, so we will, um, I'll work again, we'll get Doug back, because we gotta get, because now we have that, so, um, we'll schedule the time for Doug to come back with this bridge.
So after this week, my schedule will pay, it was gonna be three dollars for the best, so we can wait till next week.
They will.
So.
Okay. Anything else?
Not really, I've spent consuming a lot of my time. But, we go and say the guys are paving, Joe's out mowing. And get having. So the old St. Rowby's moment today. Howdy weekend coming up. The new mayor, new mower is working great. The new mower isn't working very well. Um, at some point, well, decide, we're gonna sell the other mower.
And, and we're doing the county votes for the moment, right?
Waiting on the mowing contract, they'll just, they said they're gonna be down yet, but we haven't been getting it, so, but we are gonna be mowing, I mean.
It's got something to do with their system, because we had the problem, I guess the problem happened last year too, where whatever system they're using, it doesn't.
It doesn't work well, but, uh, so at this point, yes, we are.
Was it last year? I'm thinking do the county roads twice, where did that come from?
I don't know, in the future, I'll look at Seattle, I'll look about contracts, if they change, trying to do them, but.
Right. Okay.
So, by the contract, we are required to mow them twice a year. Last year, we ended up mowing it three times a year.
Okay.
But, how do you tell somebody in the town Australian, well, you mow our roads, but while you're on the county road, you don't get the same services, so we just mow them all the same.
Right.
And roadside mowing, in my opinion, is a safety issue.
Yes.
Especially with the amount of gear to be out. So, we just mow them same as the town roads, but in the future, it would be better if we had to pay like cloud contract per trip.
Right.
But that's for another day.
Right.
Heard it? I'm good, you're good.
All right, well, then I'm gonna wish you happy birthday and I don't want to take anything back if you have a good birthday. Okay. Town clerk?
Um, yeah, I wasn't here last month, sorry about that. Um, we attended an H three C meeting, it's a historical coalition of Kewa County meeting in Auburn, the eighteenth of April. Um, I've been answering, uh, issues that people have. One was Sue Flynn wanting information on all former town supervisors. Uh, one was, um, finding out the property and house of a certain number on Route one oh four, five fifteen Route one oh four, which I didn't even know where the heck that was, but with the help of the assessor, uh, I traced it to what I knew was the home of Jeff Williams. And I got the information on the military tract, that section for her, so she can trace it right back to the beginning since the end of the Revolutionary War. A gentleman from Texas got ahold of me and he would write copies of all the information we have about the Civil War, especially the one hundred eleventh, uh, unit out of Kewa County and the bounties, the G A R, um, town meetings to raise money for bounties, uh, individual soldiers and the pictures if I have them, and in return, he, in return, he said he would send a sizable donation to the Historical Society, which he had, and I'll let Lee talk about that in a minute. Uh, so it's going to be a several month project to get it done, but I'm sending it all by email, so it won't be an ex, another expense other than my time doing the work.
Who, who was it?
His name is George McGraw. And he's an expert on the Civil War, especially the one eleventh. And that was Wayne and Kewa County soldiers. And he did a lot of work for the Wayne County bicentennial occurred last year. And he never knew anything about Sterling, so, uh, just happened to find out and he's very delighted. And the last thing is the Fairhaven Sterling Veterans Monument has been engraved now. There are thirty-seven, uh, names of Korean War veterans now on it, it's covered, and Dan told me that, uh, on next Monday at nine thirty a.m., we will have a ceremony, uh, honoring our veterans, including now those Korean War veterans. I called the people that did the engraving, they said it's been paid in full, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing, can you get that down?
It's about time.
It's done, it's.
Suzie, will that be right there in the real?
Yes. Right in the car, near the bandstand. Dan would have more details on the ceremony.
Did, did you wanna say anything about the ceremony?
Just a standard, uh, memorial based ceremony that we always have, with the addition Suzie and all of them, and it's unveiled on names of the Korean War veterans.
Also? Fine board.
We are too busy. What kind of business?
Well, it's ten things on the agenda for us to be, one day it shows we're nine. Nine of the nine, four of whom were public hearings. And we still managed to get out at eight forty-two.
Are they, like, mostly subdivisions or?
A bit of everything, special permits, subdivisions, some, some initial. Some initial, you know, um, visits to determine what, what they need to do. Yeah, a little bit of everything.
Lee, Historical Society. Yes, we're talking about Suzie, what she just talked about, the. Uh, George Gregory.
McGregor.
McGregor.
McGraw.
All Suzie's hard work she did on there. That he donated a check to the Sterling Historical Society for four thousand dollars.
I met um.
And, and the phones weren't working the day she was trying to get a hold of him, so she was racing all over this building trying to get us, get it a hold of.
One thing about him is that he had called us and thanked us for that. And uh, he said, if you guys got any projects coming up like that, like your caboose, something like that, give me a call, I got lots of money, I'll. Maybe run a donation. And uh, we got a donation.
Number? We got a bridge.
So we, we got a donation from the uh. It's a. Count of mess. Society down there, it's in. Fork by, it's a railroad signal, railroad flag with a chain. And that was located near the uh, prison in Auburn. And they stopped using that uh, in eighteen thirteen when electrical, electric, electric lights became the signals, electric signals became available. And so that's quite old, you know, it's a pretty rare piece here, so we're glad to get that, and um. I think Andrew's gonna talk to you guys about getting the rest, we're off to move now here.
Yeah, I'll put it on the agenda in the next meeting.
It's a cool piece. She's from Mexico.
He was showing the picture, you should see the wheelchair they have involved, wouldn't you?
We have one like that right over in the top of the schoolhouse here.
Oh, really?
Step in.
Oh, another thing. We have a meeting next to Suzie's uh, about presidents, and that's gonna be John Lankford's gonna be his president.
It's about what?
The president.
President.
What time is that?
July five.
All right, uh, code enforcement.
We have a town board. Our numbers for permits are back up to about the same time, actually a little higher than last year at this time, um, because we're a little bad, just giving you the heads up. Uh, letters went out at the beginning of last week, um, for a plethora of violations to multiple individuals, so if you get anywhere, um, there was about. Eight individuals, a total of ten violations, I don't know, uh, everything from. Properties that are disrepair to multiple vehicles. Uh, and there's another list of meals that they go out and make a few as well, to uh, on top of the ones that are inside, so people sort of. These are getting phone calls, the enforcement actually gave them place, so. Excuse me, so, um, so taking that up, planning board, I've been working with uh, Mr. Bill Davis, uh, he's gotten permission for working to permitting and finalizing fire inspection out. Uh, Suzie opened his wine room, double June. And then uh, also we have a mask over, uh, with this number, a process area, that's. Those are the two things that we're working on, so that's, so that's.
Well, one more thing. It'll be an excellent report, but I did complete all my state training for a year, uh, that this not happens during the program, so. Uh, state.
By twenty four hours, at least, it was trained already.
Yeah, it'll be on excellent report.
Thank you, revolution.
All right, uh. County committee reports. Karen is in here, so I will handle the water committee update, um. Currently, it is um, still in review, it is past Health Department um. Review and has gone on to uh, federal government, I can't, I think it was EPA, I was copied on email. Uh, this week with, between the state Health Department, C two A E, and I think it was EPA, EPA, somebody with the federal government. They were reviewing it, but they were having a hard time opening the document, but in that response, it was stated that they are. They have this as a priority item, because uh, they understand that we're waiting, so the state, when they submitted it, put it as priority. So hopefully, we will have uh, word back on that um, by next meeting, and I uh. Will then be able to talk further, hopefully, about a targeted date for uh, going out today.
That's the water tower, I missed that part.
Yes. Yeah, we, we can't move forward until the water tower receives the full, it's got the Health Department, which is the biggest one to get, now it just has to get. Yeah, better.
How about the survey results?
We had um, eight hundred and, or I'm sorry, four hundred and um. Seventy seven, seventy seven or seventy eight responses, um. We, it was overwhelming majority in favor, and we are still slowly trickling, getting some trickling in every couple of those. But it's overwhelming in favor.
So what will be the next step, of course, we're gonna be contingent on the water tower, probably for water district two, the Los Angeles.
Right, well, the next step, I mean. We, we had to do the district four in order to show the Health Department the use for the water tower. So district four kinda got launched a little bit prematurely, so the next step for district four, we'll go into the planning, but. Uh, we have to finish up district two before we go further in district. Okay, uh, emergency services committee, Carl, you got anything?
Yes, uh, Charlie, Chris and I had a meeting, our first one, uh, three of the gentlemen showed up from the fire department ambulance. Uh, it was an eye opener for us, and we had a great conversation, and we learned a lot, I think we're on the right firemen now, we learned a lot. And I've got some conversation with Andy on the substance of the meeting to have, and we're gonna have another meeting before uh, ambulance contract. Is gonna be fired up here somewhere, June or July, I would assume.
And then it expires in October.
It expires in October, yeah.
Yeah, there was a great conversation, there is some things that need to be fixed. And the hope for upper management and getting the information to the right people to get in line with what needs to be.
Uh, harassment workers.
People are taking the classes, I just keep sending out notices and people are taking.
Recreation Senior Citizen Program.
Yes, good evening, folks, we had, um, I mean, you got my water on there, Bev's over. I have to make sure I say it's hers, otherwise, you know, marital problems there, but anyways. But uh, just one addition to that, or a couple additions, maybe more, but we had four new members join us uh. That's uh, Monday, Thursday, right, Charlie?
Yeah.
Charlie, this is why you joined our group, it's a real chaos meeting, isn't it, Charlie?
No, actually, it's very helpful, but uh. It's good getting involved in what's going on in your world too, I think.
Yeah.
It's good for the whole community.
I'll tell you, the, the people, you saw the food it was brought.
Oh, my God.
And, and uh, well, I think our first meeting, I had to go out and get a couple more tables in for that, and it was just unreal. And this was the first meeting where we had two participants on, on some of the items on the tables, it's uh, once a dime is pretty good, no Jan Seo.
Maybe speaking, I can't get it back.
Okay, and uh, let's see. So um, you know, Bev's getting things ready for her next trip, her second trip in June, that's to uh, Placford, that's gonna be an interesting trip. She's uh, and that's about it, I like, yeah, and just to say thank you to the town board for what they do for our seniors, and now with the Yankee Report. Well, I tell you, they got a heck of a record going, they're thirty three and fifteen, they're ahead right now, going into the top of the third, I think. My, my signal didn't come in, it's the, so the Yankees are ahead right now to it enough, so again, thank you, guys.
And, yeah, thank you, Frank, and I just wanna take this time um. To recognize Frank, and I wish Bev was here, because next Tuesday, they are gonna be honored as Keeper of County Senior Citizens of the Year.
Bev and I were really, I don't know, it's just we're chacked, and then we just started getting older, and Brenda, from the office for the agent, called us. Uh, when they, back in April, like, last Friday in April. And I said, wait, and I was on the, Daniel, at my old desk, talking to her, and Brenda said, it told me, and she says, and it says, it's not just for you, Frank. Bev is in on this too, I said, wait a minute, so I went in to Bev, where she was in her office, I said, Bev, you gotta listen to this, and Brenda told me, I said, we were, it's, it's, we're just overwhelmed.
Well, you've earned it, congratulations.
Yes, thank you, granted.
Thank you. Okay, that's why we're, so I feel for you. Well, aren't we planning for next year?
No.
No, he's right. Uh, pickleball court.
Okay, after the discussions we had about the potential cost, multiple tens of thousands of dollars to improve the surface. Uh, of the basketball, tennis courts, existing ones. At the last meeting, we talked about looking for grant money, so I reached out to Toma Development, our grant writers on retainer. And my last conversation, communication on the phone was May tenth with Rich Cunningham. He assured me he would be emailing a proposal to Andy and me. With um, doing for Toma to do a grant, probably to EPA for recreational purposes. Uh, to help us with the pickleball court. Um, his, it, it appears, he did a little research, and it would have to be a matching grant, the one he's looking at. Uh, fifty fifty matching grant. And he said, if it's just, even twenty thousand, he said, that's not a significant amount of money. That EPA might look at that and say, well, they can come up with that, so he suggested looking at it more broadly. And suggest, I said, well, it's right there on a cute little creek, and it would lend itself to a picnic area, although I said, I'm on fifth of the town board. Um, but maybe picnic tables, uh, et cetera, finish the chain link fence, get the paving done, get a pickleball court in there. Uh, and then whatever, just think out of the box, so perhaps look for a more significant grant. Recognizing we probably have to do matching with fifty percent, he did say we could do any kind, if the highway department does work on it as well. So I was anticipating that I had that proposal.
Yeah, I just did a search.
Yeah, so, okay, I will reach out to him and say, we didn't get it, so, um, that's a status of that. Does that seem like something we'd wanna entertain, instead of just looking at the pickleball court, looking at the bigger picture? Looking at that little area, which the, I think it's the highway department that probably keeps it mowed.
Yeah.
Um, put a couple picnic tables there and some grill base, I don't know.
I don't.
Right.
I mean, once I go out and see that issue, I don't just see, I don't maintain, you know. I do, picnic tables, I don't, you know, take the responsibility of being our major, whatever.
Carry on, carry on.
Yeah.
Right, and you can just look out back and see if people are using it.
Well, they're having something to do today.
But anyways, I'm still working on it.
Okay, uh, zoning?
Uh, we've been meeting regularly, at least a couple of times a month, as I shared earlier, with uh. Um, Deborah Rose, the village planning board chair, has been meeting with us as well. Um, and the zoning commission is actually going line by line through the draft for the Village of Fairhaven short term rental proposed local law. Um, to see if we can have it as close to the village. Uh, so that, and I talked to our code enforcement officer as well, uh, because there's so many property, well, I guess there are a number of properties that overlap. With the village and the town, so if we had some consistent policies there regarding short term rentals, it would probably make it easier. And then, of course, with the presentation tonight, if the village chooses to go with Grantus and the town. Um, decide, once we get some updated figures, get some costs, but what are we talking about the cost? And take a look at it, do we look at the town doing it, village doing it, maybe doing it as a joint effort, save some money?
You would have to add separation there.
I don't know legally.
Yeah, entity laws.
Right. And we could add a general municipal agreement, um. Reimbursement, I don't know, we, but we need some numbers to look at, so that's, that's what the zoning commission's been working on.
Okay. All right, um, they get a motion to accept the April eighteenth regular meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Outside of that?
Oh, favors, I.
They get a motion to accept the supervisor's report. I'm gonna give that motion, also give that.
Oh, favors, I.
Correspondents. Uh, we already covered the school craft road bridge. Town of Cato's uh, resolution opposing the New York State Senate bill. Um, we will be uh, discussing that resolution um, as well.
It's in your, yeah. Can you do much research on it?
A little bit.
Okay, I don't know, so.
It's, well. I mean, we'll, we'll be taking, we can, um, when it comes time to go, and I won't put it off to last night, if you want, or even already wanted to, but. Um, but we can discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Toma Development Grant Protocol, is that what you were?
That's what I hoped that we would have on your dinner with tonight, and that's what we didn't get, we were supposed to get it a group ago.
The Sterling landfill monitoring. Planning board minutes. Zoning board minutes, planning board minutes. Bev's report. Also, the aging workshop on June fourteenth. Uh, code enforcement report. Uh, Aqua sent a policy and procedure for the town for using hydrants. Uh, Boiling Code sent a letter regarding the zoning board, um, retainer.
Okay, number twelve, does, does the town ever use the hydrants? The Aqua patterns?
No, not that I'm aware of, but it's just, it's, it's just in case they needed to, it's how they operate.
Okay.
Okay.
The Golden, probably you're mentioning, we're standout of, I couldn't.
Well, Jan Seo, it's, it's something like that. They have a website.
Right, but I was, with the document that I had here in front of me, I had put, where's the handouts, that was surprising.
Oh, yeah, no, they're, they're out of, somewhere near Rochester.
Okay.
Yeah, um, old business, um. The agreement on Water District Three, uh, I'm working on that with um. The village mayor, uh, we don't have any updates on that yet. Um, that being fees requirements, no updates on that. We had the presentation on Grantus tonight. Okay. New business, I don't have anything. So we'll move into resolutions. Uh, can I get a resolution to pay the audited vouchers?
I'll make that motion. Karen, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joe. Yeah, Andy.
Yes. Okay, um. Referring to your board's tactic, um. We're going to make a motion to move. Bank accounts, um not bank accounts, we are going to. Um. Open and transfer monies to bank accounts B, new bank accounts, B, D A, D B. Special districts and rename the consolidated funds to account A. So just rename, we're not closing the fund, just re- rename.
Jay, Nancy? I bet economy, I just need to understand. So are you undoing the consolidated funds?
No, we're just changing the name to, it's just gonna be account A instead of C F, it's just gonna say A. It's still consolidated funds, it's just gonna be A, because we have B, D A, D B in special districts. So it's for organizational purposes.
Okay, wow.
We're not, we're not changing the fund, we're just changing the name.
Consolidated funds includes fund A, B, D A, D B.
Right, and so, right, and so instead of having them all under A, we're gonna open up individual accounts, B. D A, D B, in special districts, so they're all separated. And that consolidated fund would be account A. No, they're not, they're all under one guy.
Okay, wow, okay. I'm I'm assuming Kat was the one that initiated them.
Um, yeah, I worked with her on it, um, just because when she's doing the accounting, this is how she has it set up. With all the other villages and towns, this is how she does the accounting, so she just, her ease of. Yeah. Okay, so, can I get a resolution to open and transfer monies to? Bank accounts, B, D A, D B, special districts, and rename the consolidated fund to account A. I'll make that motion.
Her.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joe. Yes, Andy.
Yes. Okay, um. We have the same resolution that Kato passed. I will, do you want me to read it before we vote on it? Do you want time to read it? Do you have it?
I, well, I have it front of me now. I I would, I think I'd kind of consult with our lawmakers and. Understand. That one's just going so, uh, the New York State Senate bill. Now, uh, I'm reluctant to.
It's, it's.
Because I don't know.
It's, it it's over the use of delinquent taxman.
Right.
Recharging.
It's basic, yeah, it it's essentially saying that you can't, the town can't profit off of someone that's. County can't profit off of a property that's been taken for going for taxes. Cause right now, the way it's set up is they can sell it to more and accept profit.
Did did we talk to our county legislator about it?
Not yet.
No, I would like to talk to other, that's what he wanted to board, so.
So, so if I don't get a motion, I'll put it on for next meeting. Okay, um. A resolution authorized a town clerk to advertise for fuel bins.
Make that motion. I'll second that.
Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joe. Yes, Andy.
Yes.
Okay, resolution for the board assessment review that will be held May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four to allow. Leslie Parsons to act as bar clerk in place of Lisa June, who is unable to attend that night.
I'll make that motion.
Here, I'll second that.
Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joe. Yes, Andy.
Yes. Motion to adjourn the ratings. I'll second that.